I'd like to call this Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors Business Meeting for Thursday, May 25, 2023, to order. Will everyone please rise and join me in the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for getting here. Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we are grateful for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive, respectful partnerships at that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and socio-political realities. So Deputy General Counsel Katie Hyland, would you mind calling the roll? Yeah, the light doesn't go on.
Fantastic, okay. Thank you. President Bonbright, President Bonbright. Vice President Strozer.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
Director Leon.
Here.
Director McElroy.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thanks, and I think we have at least one of our school representatives here. Do you want to read their list or do you have the list in front of you somewhere?
I do.
Perfect.
So do we have Paris Quinn? Javon Smith? Amanda Peterson?
Yeah, Amanda.
And Zalisha DeLeon.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you. All right, thank you very much, Katie. All right, on to item number five, adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, you were almost there. It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions on the agenda, changes, thoughts? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? We have an agenda. Item number six, recognition of staff, students, and community. 6.1, recognition of Shining Star Community Partner Award to Hope Point Church. And I believe it's Ms. Amanda Scott Thomas.
Yes, it is. Good evening, Board of Directors, beloved community. My name is Amanda Scott Thomas, and I'm the Director of the Community Partnership Office for Tacoma Public Schools, and I'm here to award the Shining Star Award for this month of May. To give you a little background, Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. In recognition of an investment of time, talent, resources, and TPS students, families, and staff, we have the Shining Star Community Partner Award to signify thanks to a community partner who's made a difference by doing what's best for kids. So tonight, we have for you Hope Point Church. They have been a faith-based partner with Fawcett Elementary School for the past six years. They have hosted family engagement events such as Turkey Bingo, Greatest Gift Shop, and let me see this slow, the Fawcett Family Frolic Dance. The congregation has also organized a soccer camp each summer for Fawcett students, and members of the church have volunteered at the school to do a book study with students. They've attended fifth grade, and they've attended fifth grade camp. One member goes above and beyond by bringing family food bags every Friday to students, as well as snacks for the classroom teachers to hand out to their classes. Mr. Tom Bryant's snacks are always a big hit with the kids. Fawcett looks forward to continuing their partnership with Hope Point for many years to come, and the Shining Star Award serves as a thank you from Fawcett families, staff, and Tacoma Public Schools. At this time, I'm going to welcome Mr. Tom Bryant, Pastor Phil, and their amazing family liaison, Sherri Stevens, to come up and accept this award. Can we give them a hand?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You want to say a little bit?
So Pastor Phil walked into my building six years ago. At that point, he had spiky hair. Not anymore, but spiky hair, and who knew the partnership we would have with him and his church over the next six years? It's been amazing and fabulous for our students and our families. They talk about the events for days after. They love Turkey Bingo. They love the Greatest Gift Shop, and we had to come up with a name for the Fawcett Family Frolic Dance. It's a tongue tie, but they love it. And so I hope this partnership continues for many years to come. Thank you so much. Tom is just invaluable. He brings family food bags, 15 of them, every Friday. Brought them today because we don't have school tomorrow, and he also brings snacks. Brought them for SBA, brings them for our family, or for our students, every Friday. So they love them, and just thank you for that. You guys are amazing.
Thank you. Pleasure.
First, welcome to the microphone, and then after, if you'd like to come up and we could take a photo with you.
Okay.
If you're interested.
Yes. Thank you very much. We here, or we at Hope Point, it's an honor to get to work with Fawcett and the fabulous staff there. We believe in public education and believe that it's, we play a small part to make Tacoma a better place, to make our community a better place, because we believe in the families, and most importantly, we believe in the students and giving them the opportunities to succeed and do great things. So thank you again. Team Fawcett, do you want to join them up there for a picture? Come on. Come on, Team Fawcett.
Okay. 6.2, recognition of student forward representatives.
Madam President, I think we have a slide deck. I want to take a moment to recommend to you that the Board of Directors recommends, recognizes our student representatives who are chosen to serve on the board this year. Ms. Paris Quinn, Mr. Javon Smith, along with Amanda Peterson and Zalisha DeLeon. And I want to just take a moment, you can see their smiling faces. It's a huge commitment to come here repeatedly, to give you their perspective, to hear from their colleagues. They've shaped us. And then I also just want to take a brief moment, I know it's a little bit out of characteristic, and I'll put Amanda on the spot. Amanda, if you'd like to join right up at the podium, please? Tracy, you have something special for Amanda.
Thank you so much.
We're, it is a privilege and an honor. We have plaques to recognize their service and their commitment to their peers, their colleagues, their community, and so on behalf of the Tacoma Public Schools, we are so honored and privileged to have been working with you.
Thank you so much.
You could say anything you'd like, or you could say it for your report.
I'd just like to thank everyone on the board for giving me the opportunity to be a student representative, and I am very interested in doing it again next year. I had so much fun doing this to represent my school. Thank you.
Well, come on up, we'll take a picture with you. Okay?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you so much, Amanda.
And Amanda will be sharing from you later.
Yep.
Thanks again. All right, item seven, superintendent's report.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Directors. Tonight, I'm joined by Dr. Forrest Greek to do a little bit of our whole educator recognitions.
All right, thank you so much, Dr. Greek, and members of the board.
You're Dr. Greek, I'm Dr. Garcia.
Wow. It's been a week.
It has been a week, and so I just want to recognize that you do not get to give away your personal.
Yeah. It's, wow, that's embarrassing. But thank you, Dr. Garcia.
I felt honored, but I don't know if you'd feel the same way.
I do, it's mutual respect.
Let's get back to the.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Garcia, and members of the board. So we have actually a two-part whole educator recognition this evening for the month of May. You probably recall back in February, we recognized all of our coaches. And well after we did that recognition, we had a notification that our FAWC basketball coach, Coach Josh Barsh, actually was recognized as Coach of the Year. And so we'd like to honor him today, kind of tag along on this whole educator recognition. So I've asked Shiante, who is the AD out at FAWC, to have a little more words and give you a little more details on this amazing recognition.
Hello, everyone. A couple weeks after the winter season ended, I've been working with Sports and Schools Organization indirectly with Christina Broadwin, and they had a thing where they wanted ADs to nominate coaches. And so I nominated Coach Barsh, and I'd like to take a minute and read my nomination about Coach. I wrote, "Coach Barsh is one of the most dedicated and determined coaches I've had the pleasure to supervise. Every day, he comes in two hours before practice and conducts study hall for our boys on all three teams. He always is checking and asking about their grades and advocates for them to get any help or assistance that they may need in academic standpoint. Due to this commitment, we had zero varsity players that had to miss any games due to grades. Coach Barsh cares greatly for each of his players, not just his players, but his young men. It's bigger than basketball for him. He has truly created and developed a family-first atmosphere, and because of the way he approaches coaching this team, they are heading into districts, at the time, with a great chance of making it to the state tournament. Coach Barsh has a great integrity and holds himself and his student athletes accountable for all that they do. He has created a sense of pride when those players put on their FAWC jerseys, and they are proud to be FAWC Falcons, and it all starts with Coach Barsh. As the Athletic Director at FAWC High School, I'm very proud and grateful to have him as our head boys' basketball coach." So with that nomination, he was picked to be Coach of the Year from Sports and Schools, and he was honored a couple weekends ago at the Museum of Fight at the Met Gala that they hosted. So he's an amazing individual and an amazing coach, so I'd like to honor him at this time.
Just want to say thank you, and I'm honored to be a part of this district and to help the community. Coaching these young boys and young men in this area is really dear to my heart, and I'm just very proud of the boys and the work they put in this year to not have any kids ineligible. It's my fifth year there, and we've had issues and missing games every year. Did something new this year, they bought into it, and it worked, and I'm proud of them, and I'm looking forward to what we got going next year.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys.
I'm doing great, Mark, I so appreciate it. Yeah, one, two, three.
All right.
Thank you, Forrest.
Okay, we're going to switch over now to our second part. So the part of this program is for the month of May, we are recognizing our teachers as a whole educator recognition. All right, so, see if I can get this slide into work. Great. So as we all know, teachers play a critical role in the development of our community's children. Our teachers help us to get through our tough days, and their continued inspiration lead us in all, lead us all into being better role models. There are just not enough words to express our gratitude, and we recognize that being a teacher is a big job. Our teachers are unsung heroes, working tirelessly to educate, inspire, and guide our students and families. We would like to thank each teacher with further patience, kindness, and understanding to our students and honor them for the passion for teaching and nurturing young minds. A teacher's dedication is truly inspiring, and we are grateful for all that they do for our students, staff, and our community. And joining us here today are two teachers that we'd like to contribute to. So we have Joian Gutierrez, I think we could add. Our next teacher is Benjamin Miersman, and I'm not sure if he was able to join us here tonight. And then like, I'd also like to recognize on behalf of all teachers as well is our TA president, Penny Kramer. If we could just give them one more big round of applause for the amazing job that they did here for Tacoma Public Schools. Thank you so much. All right, can we do some pictures?
Yep.
You good?
Yeah, we can do some pictures.
Of course, we're doing pictures. Come on, Penny, you're too, and coming too.
Thank you, Mark.
Can we have all the, any teachers that happen to be in the room right now? Come on up and get your picture taken with that.
Mark, I'm going to take you back. We're going to get you a pic there, Mark.
Mary Ryan. This is Forrest.
So Madam President, I would just like to echo Dr. Greek's words tonight. As a member of our, our team, I'm proud to serve with our teaching staff. It's a thankless job, even though sometimes there are thank yous, it's never enough. We have amazing educators, amazing teaching staff all across this district, and it's not lost on me, how hard they work, how much they put in to that work. And if you're ever in doubt, you just have to walk into our classrooms, and you can see how our kids feel safe, supported, challenged, and loved, and I'm grateful for them. So thank you very much to our teaching staff.
Absolutely. All right, item number seven, superintendent's report.
I think we did that, I think we're on number eight, President.
I'm sorry, we're now on eight. Staff report to the board.
We're going to start with our Head Start review, Head Start Year in Review, and I believe we have Ms. Michelle Rawl Lewis here to lead us off.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I want to apologize that we did have some Policy Council chairperson and another Policy Council representative that was going to be here tonight, but due to some unforeseen circumstances, they are not able to attend. So they wanted me to apologize on their behalf. Now, moving into our review, I always mess up this. There we go. Just going to talk about some of the accomplishments that our Head Start program has done so far this year. We are very proud to be one of the highest in the region on our enrollment. We did not get put on an enrollment plan for the Tacoma Public Schools because we were at 97% enrollment. So we are very, very proud of ourselves for reaching that, and that is with the influxes of students that are moving in and out of our district. Another accomplishment is that we were able to get additional languages translated into for our enrollment and our application system. We had five additional languages added, and every year, our goal is to continue to add more languages until we have full representation of all of the languages spoken within the district. Another accomplishment that we are very proud of is our attendance rates. So our attendance rates for, to meet our performance standard is at 85%. We are just a little bit below that at, I'm sorry, above that at 85.2%. So we met the standard. We want to, of course, continue to try to strive for higher attendance rates. However, we know with all of the different flus and just coming out of COVID, but we are very proud to be able to maintain those rates and stay in compliance. We've just recently completed our self-assessment with the input of some community members that joined in and our Policy Council and some staff. That report is being analyzed and compiled, and that will be delivered to the board within a Friday report in the next couple of weeks. Our kindergarten readiness scores from fall to spring had a significant increase, so we are very happy to say that we're meeting our 85% benchmark in social, emotional, language, literacy, cognitive, and physical development. Our math is a little bit lower, and we are working on some professional development activities to be able to get that up to the 85%. It's currently at 84.2, so we're just right there. Another great accomplishment that our families really love this year is that we were able to bring conscious discipline, which is our social and emotional curriculum. We were able to bring a trainer in to support our staff during the day, and then she stayed, and we had a parent meeting, and she was able to do that training with our families as well. So just making sure that that streamlined from home to school learning and from school to home learning. Parents really enjoyed that. We've got fabulous feedback on that, and we're hoping to bring that back again for the next school year. One, another accomplishment that we did is that we had our Policy Council lobby very heavily through our WASSA representation, and we were able to keep the SNAP food benefit as a categorical eligible eligibility for enrollment. So that means any family that is receiving a SNAP food assistance is eligible to enroll in our Head Start program regardless of income. So our next steps for next year, we are striving to reach full enrollment. We want to be at 100%, all 400 slots and seats filled, maintain our 85% or higher attendance rates, again, provide additional translation services for written material, and address some key findings that we're finding within our self-assessment. Some of those key findings would be increasing our medical and dental examinations. We are a little bit lower than our average, and we're thinking that is because it's been really hard to get in to see a physician, and the appointment dates are going later and later, and so was working with families and supporting them to find their physical and dental care, annual care. We will start our focus area to federal review within the next two weeks. The Office of Head Start will be here in Tacoma the week of June 5th through the 9th, and they are going to be here to take a look at all the wonderful things that our Head Start program is doing within Tacoma. They'll be visiting almost every classroom. They'll be working with our family and community component lead, seeing how we support our families. They'll be looking at our fiscal to ensure that we are maintaining our fiscal responsibilities, as well as our education component and health components. We will be updating our community assessment next year, working with Burke to help look at our, the assessment needs within the Tacoma School District as we start to write our new five-year competitive grant for Head Start. We are just ending our grant cycle for the 23-24 school year, and we'll be writing a new five-year grant for the 25-30 school year. Wow, it's hard for me to say that, 2030. And again, we are going to be providing some ongoing supports for social and emotional learning for our families at home. We will, again, trying to bring our conscious discipline back for an in-person with the families, working on some book studies with families, and then we are also contracting again with Greater Lakes Mental Health to be able to provide a minimum of three service, counseling services for the families that are asking for a referral or are finding a need. And then our next piece of, sorry, I keep on forgetting to advance us so that you can see, would be just our parents' journey for Policy Council, and so I'm just going to speak just very overview around that. So the parents that are on our Policy Council, we have one parent representative for all of our classrooms, so for all of the 20 classrooms, and those parents are volunteer. They volunteer their time. They come in and they help us support to writing grants, rewriting and updating our policies so that we are in compliance with our performance standards. They choose to be there, they choose to have that voice, they're learning about advocacy and really being their child's first educator and being able to advocate for their child's needs as well as the needs of early learning. So I'm very appreciative for all of them that spend their time with us and their willingness to be able to support our program.
Michelle, can I add to that?
Yes.
It's been a really wonderful year in Policy Council. Sometimes my attendance is hit and miss, but every time I show up, the parents are showing up in a way they could all take our jobs. They govern their meetings very efficiently, they vote, like, they really talk it out, they ask deep questions, and then they ask questions of the staff, and they push everything back to the department, and they're like, what are we going to do and how are we going to make all of our classrooms better? And how can we bring in more community partners? So it was really like, Michelle took their lead and just drove that bus home, but it was so amazing to watch from the beginning of the year, from orientation to where we were just last month. It's just been so much growth in the parents, and a lot of them are going into kindergarten. I'm just like, that's what we want. We want parents who are ready for K-12 and because of Head Start and the program and the way you're running it. It's really been a phenomenal year for me to watch you guide the parents.
Oh, thank you. All right, any other questions for me around Head Start?
I did have a question. So when you were talking about the book study with the families, can you talk a little bit more about what does that entail, and are there specific topics? What does that, what does that look like?
So based off of the feedback that we got from our last, our first parent meeting with conscious discipline, they were really interested in a book called Creating a School Family. And it's a book around how our Head Start classrooms create that feel of a school family. So we had about five families that wanted to check out books. We got them books so that they can start reading that, those books, and our Policy Council representative wanted to take a lead for the next year, she has a returning student, and wanted to host some small group circles so that they can be able to read those books and pass it on to the other members within their classroom.
Thank you. Yeah, and I know there's, is there one more slide with the list of all the names of all the?
Thank you.
I just thought it would be good to see all those parents who are donating their time and of course, our own. Michelle Kelroy, right there on that list. Yeah, that's pretty impressive, a lot of, a lot of families committing their time.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam President, I just want to thank the Head Start Policy Council, it is a lot of, a lot of work. You know, you have young ones, you have family, some are working, other obligations and dedicate themselves to help us get better is very meaningful. And then I want to give a special shout out to Michelle Rawl Lewis. Michelle has done an amazing job of bringing access in an equitable fashion to early learning, specifically the preschool programs across the district. Not many districts have this much preschool in partnership with community, and Michelle has to navigate, I'll just throw out some terminology that you might have a little familiarity with, is different compliances, state, federal, local, ECAP, Head Start, ELL, Special Ed, Transitional CAE, Montessori. Michelle had the heavy task of weaving things together to try to do what's right. So thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
That's great. Always great, and those, the increase in, in attendance and in, in the number of seats that are filled and all of that shows a lot. and all of that shows a lot of hard work. I remember at the beginning of the year, it wasn't quite so impressive, and now it's just great. And of course, the math scores and all of the, I mean, all the other scores too. Thank you, Michelle, and the whole team. There's a lot of, you've got a strong team that works in pre-K, so thank you very much, all of you. All right, item eight point two, the, go ahead.
Madam President, Board of Directors, tonight we have Director Angie Neville joining us. Thank you, Angie. Angie is going to talk about our six through eight social studies material review and adoption process.
Good evening. I'm Angie Neville. I'm one of the directors in curriculum and instruction, and this year, we have engaged in a process at the middle school level to look at social studies materials, and that's what I'm going to be sharing with you tonight. Of course, as any adoption, we follow the policy twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty R closely to make sure that we're going through the process in, in a efficient and correct way. That adoption policy includes a number of different committees that, that we go through as we screen materials and we pilot them. It starts with instructional committee, Instructional Materials Committee, which is at the district level, kind of that broader team moves down to what we call the DCDC, which is the District Curriculum Development Committee, which includes mostly teachers who are actually teaching middle school social studies in this case, then moves down to pilot classrooms with social studies teachers across the district, and then goes back up again. So as they score and screen, it moves back up to the DCDC, back up to the IMC Committee, and then finally to our superintendent and to you. Last year, I stood before you at the same time, and we were looking at elementary materials for social studies, which did end up being adopted and implemented this year. And this year, we also have been looking at middle school, and so tonight we'll be talking about those. The social studies curriculum adoption has been a journey. It started back in twenty nineteen when the state adopted new standards, and we went through a full prioritization process with K through twelve, bringing in lots of teachers to help us to prioritize those standards. And then COVID came, and so there were lots of pauses along the way. So it really has kind of been a four-year journey to get to where we are today. That's included us vetting the current adoption to see how aligned it is to those new standards. We found that there was not a lot of alignment, and so we began the adoption process. We put out an RFP, a Request for Proposals. Vendors could submit programs for us to review. We ended up with six at the middle school level, and we looked at those. Out of those six programs, only two of them met, met our qualifications, and so we began piloting those materials. But by the end of last year, twenty-one, twenty-two, we did not feel like either program met our expectations. So we kind of had to go back to the drawing board and start over again. And so we went out to look to see what else was out there. And we found a program that was through a company called Educurious, and we took that back to our DCDC, scored those materials, ended up feeling like they were a strong candidate for adoption. So we began soliciting teachers to come and pilot those materials this year, which we did from September until March. And tonight, I'm sharing with you some of the scoring of that.
Can you say what DCDC is for those who are listening?
Yeah, it's the District Curriculum Design Committee or Content Design Committee. And so they're, like I said, they are actually teachers of that content area in that grade band, so kind of on the, in the trenches. So they're looking at those materials through a teacher's eyes.
Thank you.
I want to tell you a little bit about Educurious. So Educurious is a nonprofit organization that is based here in the Puget Sound area. That's going to become important as I talk a little bit more about our partnership with them. Looks a little bit different than these huge companies that are national companies that design curriculum, and it is what it is, and we can't really make any changes to them. They design units that are project-based or inquiry-driven, which is great because that's very much in alignment with the new, the social studies framework called the C3 Framework, which is a national framework for social studies instruction. This description that is on the screen actually comes from their website. The one piece that I love about this is the idea of students being learning detectives because that's really what an inquiry-based program is all about. You present some kind of an overarching question or problem, and students are become detectives as they explore different resources, primary sources, secondary sources, all different kinds of artifacts to come up with kind of their own understanding of that problem and the solutions that might be involved in that. And then finally, they design some kind of a product that shows what they know. Often, that's a call to action. It might be a letter to our mayor, or it might be some posters that they're putting up in businesses around the, the city or something along those lines, so showing what they've This just shows kind of the process that each unit goes through. Like I said, it starts with a driving question, includes this investigation that's guided by the teacher, teacher scaffolding, differentiating, supporting, introducing new things along the way. Alongside of that, students are collaborating. They are, is both independent work, but also a lot of collaboration and conversation between students. That ends with that, with that project, kind of to show what they know and a place to share it with an audience and a celebration for all that they've learned. We have about forty-five social studies teachers at the middle school level. We ended up having twenty-five of those teachers who piloted the program, so about fifty percent of our teachers. They were all invited to engage in this, but twenty-five teachers kind of took up the gauntlet and, and went ahead and piloted. We did have representation from every school except for Tacoma Online, who uses a different curriculum for their online program. Some schools had as many as four teachers. Many schools had one, but we did have representation from all. We had representation both at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, pretty evenly, and it impacted approximately four thousand students. The scoring that we go through, both at the initial vetting process and the pilot scoring is, is pretty much the same. It mirrors each other. It starts with some non-negotiables, and these are the six non-negotiables that we originally went through. We want to make sure that the, the curriculum is current, that it includes multiple authors' perspectives, that it aligns to our standards in the C3 framework, that they're of the highest, the materials are of the highest quality, and that all students are able to access them. And Educurious passed this with flying colors. And then we look at desired characteristics. So these seven categories that you see on this slide have a lot more detail of what does that look like to be in instructional support or include equitable and inclusive practices. In the appendices in this PowerPoint, you can see all the, all that kind of detail. You'll notice here, though, that the, when we, the DCDC originally scored Educurious, it came out as eight point four seven average, which is a very solid score for all of these different areas. Once it got to the pilot teachers, remember the pilot teachers engaged with units from September through the end of March? It scored a little bit lower than the original. Remember that the DCDC is kind of taking a quick look through it. They're glancing through it, but those teachers are, right, they're in the trenches. They're like using the lessons with students. But you'll see that it also still scored a seven point one as an average, which is just below almost meeting or just below meets our criteria. And, and you'll see in the next couple of slides, we'll talk about some areas that they felt like maybe needed a little refinement and what we're doing about that. This slide just includes some of the quotes that we pulled from the, the pilot teachers. You'll see that they talk about how this curriculum is highly rigorous. There's a lot of collaboration. Students can see themselves in the units. That student voice is lifted up definitely as part of this curriculum. Someone talked about how Educurious should be commended on their efforts to include tribal voices in the curriculum. We don't often see that, or sometimes it's really broad and vague, but they were able to really focus in on Washington and the Puget Sound area to look at tribal voices embedded in the curriculum. And a lot of technology embedded in it, which is really beneficial since we're a one-to-one district. Some of the areas they felt needed a little bit refinement were, they wanted more scaffolding, more ideas on how to support students at all different levels. Our teachers talked about they needed more, more assessments embedded in there, and they were especially wanting assessments that were tied directly to our priority standards here in TPS. They talked about how for some of our students, between COVID and other challenges, that some of our students just didn't have some of the background that our curriculum often expects an eighth grader or a seventh grader to have. So they wanted some additional materials that they could use to build background knowledge and academic vocabulary with our students in order them, in order for them to be prepared to have some really deep conversation. And then finally, although the curriculum really does a great job of focusing on most of the more common, what we would call common marginalized groups, they wanted to see maybe some different unheard stories from our LGBTQ plus community and more women raised up as part of this. So all of that feedback I took to Educurious to tell them, like, here's what our teachers say. And they came right back and said, we are your partners. We will stand beside you. We'll make refinements. We are ready to do that work with you to get you what you need so that it is the strongest curriculum that we can provide to your students. So this slide just talks about addressing some of those issues that I just spoke about, and we've already begun that work. We've met, we've been meeting with them this week to look at some of the units, to see how we can enhance them and make them even stronger. This slide just talks about a quick poll. So remember about those, there are those different committees that it goes through as part of the adoption process. When we had first looked at the pilot teachers and how they responded to the curriculum, out of the twenty-five teachers, fifteen of them were like, yes, let's adopt tomorrow. And another ten of them were like, hmm, I've got a little bit of concern here. Like, there's some things that I feel like need refinement. We then took that, all that information from those pilot teachers to our DCDC members, of which there were eleven. And after examining all the feedback, those, that team, ten of the DCDC members said, we're really confident that with your partnership with Educurious, that we should move forward with recommending adoption. There was one person on the DCDC that still had a few reservations. And then finally, we took all of that to the IMC, which there are thirteen members, and after having much discussion, they really felt confident and unanimously voted to move forward with adopting this curriculum. If you, this comes to a vote to you in a few weeks, if you choose to, for us to move forward with this adoption, we have a number of next steps that we'll be going through, especially between now and September, to ensure that we have a strong kickoff to this adoption, and that includes having our printing and graphics department print the materials for us, making sure that we have professional development for, not only for our teachers, but for our administrators and instructional coaches to support along the way, all of the refinements that they're going to be working on with us. It'll be kind of that accordion back and forth so we can give feedback and they can continue to refine. And, and then lots of support next year as well as we, as if we were to adopt. And finally, I just want to say thank you to all the people that have been involved in this process, our twenty-five dedicated pilot teachers, the DCDC and the IMC members. I especially, though, want to recognize our instructional facilitator in our department, Nicole Everett oversees K through twelve social studies. It's a big job, and she just does a phenomenal, phenomenal work. So special, special thanks to her. She really, truly is my hero. And, and then finally, a thank you to our instructional coaches and principals who have supported teachers along the way. Like I said, there's all kinds of appendices with more information for you. But with that, is there any questions that you have for me?
What was IMC? I was trying to keep up with the acronyms as we were doing, and I got
Yeah.
really lost on that one.
Yeah, it's the Instructional Materials Committee, and it includes, there are some teachers on that committee, there are some principals on that committee, and then pretty much representation from every department across the district.
So we have like the pilot teachers, and then we have the other acronym, I'm not going to say, and then we end up with all for the Instructional Material Committee, which is like every branch of people who are really invested in this work.
Yep.
And so that way, we kind of, we were checking our balances, checks and balances as we were doing this process.
Absolutely. So we've got special education, we've got ELL, we've got pretty much every department across the district is part of that IMC, and it starts with them and ends with them before it comes to you. So they're, they're looking at the rubric, they're approving the people that we pick for the DCDC, our timeline, all of that ends up going through the Instructional Materials Committee.
That was really helpful. I followed the whole report, and then I was like, but if I don't know what IMC means, it doesn't, you know, it's not registering. This is really well thought out, and thank you for presenting this to us.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I do have a question. I was curious about, so with the, going to the poll, the teachers that did, had their concerns and reservations, and then the talks about the pieces around the, I'm going to call it ingenuity, and I know that's not it, but it's a different thing, but how, so as those enhancements are developed,
Yeah.
will those same pilot teachers be able to continue to provide their feedback in that process?
Absolutely. And one of our partnerships with Educurious, even though we are making the refinements at the beginning here before they even would get started in September, they, Educurious is interested in our feedback all along the way. So as our teachers engage in the units next year, they will be collecting feedback from, from our teachers after the first unit to say what went well, where did you see challenges, what else can we do to make this even stronger? So we've got, the contract is, is kind of looking at a seven-year partnership where they continually support, update. It's one of the best things about having an online curriculum as well, because we get all those updates for the next seven years, where if you purchase a textbook, right, it's like whatever you get is what you get, and we're not getting an update until we re-adopt, you know, seven years from now, whereas this is a continually updated curriculum all along the way.
Thank you for that additional information.
Yeah.
Gentlemen, either one of you have something?
Yeah, I just, I have one quick question. You mentioned the C3 framework. What does C3 stand for? I saw it on slide seven, but for folks who couldn't catch the slide.
Yep. I think it's a college, community, and civic life.
College, career.
Career and live civic life. Thank you.
I looked it up, but I just wanted you to share it for everybody else.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Director Leon, do you have anything? I just want to say how impressive this whole presentation and the process is and how you explained it in such a way that made sense, because I know it is so complicated. And I also, I'm actually really excited about Educurious being a local company that's really wanting to be bringing in more tribal issues, bringing, you know, looking at what's important to us here in Tacoma Public Schools, and I like that flexibility.
Yeah.
And so I think I'm looking forward to seeing how this works in the classroom. And I also had the same question that Director Keating did about And I also had the same question that Director Keating did about those teachers who were not 100% comfortable and just the fact that you could go back to EduCurious and say, here are some issues and making sure that everybody gets back in touch and then feels confident that they were hurt. So thank you for doing all that work. I know it was a lot. And to your whole team, so.
Thank you.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you very much. That's, that's very exciting. All right. Item number nine, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your civil input is appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting and the superintendent or a designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at the board meeting, you can also send emails to board@, to the board, at board@tacomak12.wa.us. And please contact the board office in advance of the meeting for disability accommodations. So we have two options. We have the verbal, the ones who are here today, and we also have written comments. And I know we have one written comment by Treymar Baptiste around reassigned substitute teacher. And then we also, do we have resigned? Yeah, resigned, yeah, there it is. It's bigger, I can see it now. And do we have anybody here in person?
We do. We have four individuals slated to speak.
So I'm going to turn it over to you, Katie, and you can read the instructions and set us off.
Absolutely. Thank you. Public comments at board meetings are governed by District Policy 1430. As such, President Bonbright may interrupt or terminate an individual's statement when it is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. You can find a summary of Policy 1430 on the blue cars available in the lobby and at tacomaschools.org. And with that said, the first commenter is Katie Callahan.
My name is Katie and I'm here because my daughter is a first grader at Lion Elementary School. She's autistic and she receives special ed support through the NEST program. I emailed many of you earlier today outlining why I think displacing the students at Lion is a harmful choice. And I am pleased to hear that that decision has been paused for now. So thank you for listening to the community, but I do want to take this opportunity to tell you about why Lion and the nesting program is so special and how it specifically benefited my daughter. So Lion is not our home school. We tried to make it work at our neighborhood school last year when my daughter was in kindergarten, but it was not a good fit. Her IEP accommodations weren't followed, the special ed teachers slept through meetings, my daughter started disrobing at school, she was eloping, she started self-harming, she stopped eating when she was at school and she lost 20% of her body weight. Her gen ed teacher didn't have experience working with autistic students and she proactively isolated her every day. We as parents were struggling because we wanted to support our neighborhood school, but we knew it wasn't working. Someone suggested we transfer her to Lion, she was across town from us, but we knew Lion had a solid reputation. We knew that the building was recently remodeled with sensory-friendly supports and we knew that it had the NEST program and multiple other special ed programs all under one roof. The Lion community has been amazing and our transfer there last March has been life-changing. My daughter gained all the weight back that she lost within six weeks of being at Lion. Eloping went from a weekly occurrence to a yearly occurrence. Disrobing is a non-issue. She still self-harms, but it's much less frequent and much less severe. And she gets push and support every day from paraeducators who are trained with autistic The NEST at Lion is more than just the people who staff it and a room. The NEST has been there for a decade and the special ed teachers have these really strong relationships with the educator, the gen ed teachers. It's so finely tuned that they know when to give the right amount of push and support and they know when it's appropriate to pull as well. And those relationships are not something that can be picked up and moved to a different school. So that, it's important to know that this kind of supportive environment doesn't exist at all schools. And we know this because of our experience at our neighborhood school. Moving the four educators would only hurt the students and a lot of these students are biracial, they're disabled, they're the students already furthest from educational justice. And so I'm very supportive of the district expanding the NEST program and moving, you know, adding a new location. But to displace the students at Lion for the sake of other students is, it's harmful. It's a massive disruption and it'll have ripple effects for these kids who've already had their educations disrupted by COVID or a kid like mine who's already been disrupted by a mid-year transfer. So again, thank you for listening to the community and pausing that. And I'd like to, you know, I hope that we can keep the NEST at Lion indefinitely. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
The next commenter is Treymar.
Hello, social scientist, Mr. Treymar. Thank you Tacoma School District for my elementary, middle school, and high school education. At grade middle school in the sixth grade, you guys introduced me to Jane Elliott's Blue Eyes First Brown Eyes Experiment, and yet I was disciplined for showing the movie. Lastly, if you could please consider, we have, we are having transplants from other states moving to Tacoma, becoming educators and bringing their discriminatory prejudice and racist ways with them without understanding the generational communal engagement amongst us Tacoma residents. And lastly, principal, the main principal at Lincoln High School, in my opinion, is not a perfect fit. May the peace of our Christ be with you all. Thank you.
The next commenter is Mike Say.
I live in the Oakland area and the Oakland Elementary School that was there in the past opened in 1912. In 1986, it was closed down because of earthquake problems. It was reopened two years later after earthquake restraints were put into the building, not telling the public that it was turned to an alternative high school and not given the opportunity for the kids in our area to return to their grade school. I see now that they're going to expand the alternative high school that the community still doesn't want in their area. We have a growing community that has hundreds of children that need a school to go to. They're being bused to three other schools right now. And all the people in the alternative high school are not from our area. They are being bused in from areas all around the Tacoma School District because those kids are not able to perform in the high school setting with the normal situation of kids. But we shouldn't be punished for the lack of room to put your kids that need special needs. We feel that the, the grade school that was there, which was also our meeting place for our neighborhood group, was taken away from us. The baseball fields, the things that were within the grade school were taken away from us as a community. We feel that with all this high-density building in our area and all the busing that's been going around, that we should have a grade school back. And money being brought back to support a high school is a good thing, but it would be better if the public were involved in it. I've heard nothing of any type of remodel work or funding that was coming back to the school only by accident, by seeing construction workers out there. Have I been notified that there's been a step forward in remodeling the building? But again, this land was a donated land in 1866. It wasn't a city of Tacoma land. It was Oakland, Madrona, and it was donated by a couple that, for public use. So the stores were put in, the park was put in, the school was put in. But once you take the school away, we have no way of meeting anymore. Our parent, the parents no longer see each other in a, in a setting of a school or any way of association. I'm sorry if I've taken up too much time, but I would like to have the Oakland Elementary School returned to our community so it would better our community and create less busing for our kids. Thank you. Thank you.
Our last commenter is Cindy Kennedy.
Again, my name is Cindy Kennedy. I'm the Title I Intervention Teacher at Mary Lion Elementary School. This afternoon, we had two wonderful surprises, allowing us to keep our NEST program and recognizing one of our first grade teachers, Jillian, for her excellent work with children. And congratulations, Jillian, and we just love good news at our school. I have come tonight to the school board meeting to support Lion's parent teacher organization, parents who have come to speak to you. I believe a big concern revolving around the news that we might lose our NEST program was a lack of transparency. Lion's, Lion's NEST team and Lion's staff should have been the first to know about this plan and not the last. To hear others throughout the district were privy to this information up to two months prior to us knowing is rather disconcerting to me. Our staff and community should have been consulted about this plan from the beginning rather than being blindsided by those planning this change. From the letters and calls that you have all received regarding this potential change, you've seen that our staff and families obviously believe and support our NEST program. Please know that we will continue to rally around the NEST annually if necessary. So I want to really thank you again for the decision to keep our program at Lion for the 23, 24 school year. Have a great evening.
Thanks to all, all of you who came to speak tonight. We appreciate hearing your thoughts. Item number 10, the consent agenda.
I move to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions, changes to the consent agenda? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we have 5-0, we have a consent agenda. Item number 11, policy matters. Item 11.1, the first reading of revised policy 2420, grading and progress reports. I will turn this over to Katie, who is our deputy general counsel.
Yes, thank you. On behalf of the Office of General Counsel, on behalf of Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, we recommend that the Board of Directors review the revised draft of policy 2420 and provide feedback before a second reading.
So this is just a conversation, it's first reading. If you, I'm assuming everyone had a chance to look at it before the meeting tonight, and I see Zeke lurking in the back there, ready to pounce if we have any questions. So does anyone have any questions on this? Thoughts or questions for Zeke on why or how? I know, we've been talking about. I was going to say, we've been talking about this for quite some time, but it was nice to see it in the frame of a policy from all, how, how all those conversations led us to this policy. And I just want to thank Zeke and also the council office for all their hard work in putting this down into, into a framework that's understandable and is directive in terms of what we as a board and as a district want, want our grading policy to be. I also want to let folks know that this is first reading, so in between now and the next time that this comes up, we will, we'll come to the Equity Policy Review Team. And so there will be community input on this as well, beyond what's already been done, which there's been a lot with families.
Real quick, Madam President, the community always has the opportunity to obviously speak publicly at a public meeting, but in your policy reviews, just to remind them that you can go onto the board's website and you can submit comment there for any of us to consider. So still plenty of opportunity to provide feedback.
Yep.
Last week, I believe it was last week, we had a work study where there was some information presented and that's also posted online. So if folks want to see a little more in-depth of how we got here, that would be also an opportunity there. So and as you mentioned, our wonderful Equity Policy Review Team will be reviewing this prior to making any final recommendations. So please continue to review and share and we'll go from there.
All right. Well, thank you. And thank you, Zeke, for being prepared. All right. Moving on to item number 12, financial report. And here comes Roslyn. District quarter report is ready for discussion.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Yes. Well, I would like to provide you with a brief overview of where we're at in our current processing. So you've seen this a number of times in presentations that we've brought to you before. This is just our high-level grouping of the tasks and activities that are going on in order for us to get to the end state of our budget. And May is a very busy month for us. Many things occurring simultaneously, some things starting, some things ending. And so we're here to bring a little bit of an update as to where we're at in this point of time, talk to you a little bit about some of the community activities that we've been engaging in, and then just let you know that there's a lot going on. And so it's, it's a little bit of a fervor right about now for us. One of the things that we'd like to highlight are our community budget activities. So we did put out a budget calculator and solicited feedback from the public on the budget calculator. And I, it's not available anymore, right, Kristin? Yeah, I think we've taken it down because it's the end of, it's the end of the time when we wanted to access it. But we will put it back up once we've balanced the budget and after we have done our public presentation so we can solicit additional feedback. Budget Advisory Committee has commenced and completed, and I'm going to give you a little bit of highlight on that. And then we still do have a couple of other opportunities for budget public engagement. We'll have budget webinars in the month of June and we, probably June, July, it depends on when we actually get the budget balanced. And then we'll have formal public hearings as we're preparing to propose a budget to you for adoption. So our Budget Advisory Committee is complete. I would like to take a quick moment to just say thank you to the Budget Advisory Committee. We had 26 participants that came and participated. It always warms our heart, Kristin and I specifically, when we have 26, like willing participants to come and listen to about how revenues are generated for the school district and how we allocate expenditures and all the rules and laws and compliance expectations that come along with the budget. And they all just sit there with a very interested, very engaged look, asking lots of very pointed questions, really putting us on our toes to make sure that we understand what we're talking about. And it really was a fantastic experience from our perspective and we got some really good feedback from our participants as well. There is a full report that's available. It's on our agenda for this evening. I did email that to the board members yesterday so that you have access to that report. And it is posted on our archived site for the Budget Advisory Committee out on the public budget webpage. So anybody can access that report at any time, along with all the other materials that was presented at our Budget Advisory Committee in the past. Some of the recommendations, and I, I really condensed these down, so this is not fair to say that the meetings, the five meetings and the one virtual in-person meeting that we had really aren't represented in these few statements that I'm going to make. So please feel free to engage in the report, which is what was approved or blessed by the team that got together. But some of the things that they really highlighted were investing in equity-based and inclusive programming, highly capable access and programming, and student mental health supports. And then they encouraged us to protect investments and core instruction, student mental health and teacher retention. And then I would just really love to say a kudos to the entire budget team, including Kristin Bell. They put everything together and made sure that we, you know, people were fed and happy and engaged and had all access to all the materials. And so just a great appreciation of that. And thank you, of course, to all the Budget Advisory Committee members. We invited them to be here this evening. They did not come, so.
Wait, wait, we have somebody here apparently.
Where are you? Oh, oh my gosh, hi, I didn't see you. Oh, please stand up. Would you just please stand up? Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Yes, so we do have a member here. I'm very excited. I hope you agree with my sentiment that it was an experience that was worthwhile and yes, very engaging. So thank you, thank you so much to the Budget Advisory Committee for their participation. I know I'm super appreciative. Then I want to just switch gears a little bit to where we're at in our actual budgeting process. So we did release a communication since the last time we've had a board meeting or around the last time we had a board meeting, that we had an estimated $10 million shortfall. And we had expressed at that time that the loss of enrollment, the And we had expressed at that time that the loss of enrollment, the shift in ESAR funding, and of course, costs associated with inflation, salaries and things like that, were what were pushing that $10 million shortfall. And that we would need to reassess once the legislature had finalized. The legislature has now finalized since we met last, and we do know that there will need to be some future reductions that will have to be on top of the $10 million. We can't say an actual shortfall number. We've been waiting for OSPI to release their revenue calculator so that we can make sure that the revenues that we're anticipating based on the legislation that we've seen actually seem to be in alignment with the OSBI and their rules and, and so that we can make sure that we're not cutting too much or not cutting enough. And in respect with that, the calculator was actually released yesterday. I know I say here, May 26th, they were nice enough to release it a day early. And so we're already engaging in those calculations as of today. So we should be able to address what the shortfall is here shortly, and we will continue our process of identifying reductions, of course, using what the Board has defined as the guiding principles, so that we have a framework of what is expected around how we make those decisions at the cabinet level. We'll continue to meet with the cabinet until we get to a reduced amount sufficient to balance the budget. And then that work will be ongoing. And so additional cuts and Phase Two, so to speak, may be coming here in the next several weeks.
I just want to pause this. We have, we have shared with the public, as well as you, that enrollment has declined. In your appendix, you'll see that there is the charts. We've shared this with you. You can see it over the years. And the biggest challenge for us is, and we've talked about this since day one, we were blessed to have ESAR dollars, right? And to shore up that gap of enrollment pre-pandemic, we're not alone. You can read the newspapers and you can see school districts all across the state are also in this challenge. We were providing supports for the right reasons with these one-time dollars. Those one-time dollars are no longer available. And you'll start to even see even conversations at a federal level about clawing some of those dollars back. These are very difficult times. We have more work to do. We are going to continue to file your guiding principles. You've charged us with, make sure during the year, if we're in a place we need to restrict or slow down spending, that's what we're doing. And so we are in this process. You'll see where there are conversations that are taking place, where we will continue to try to find areas where we can stop spending, limit reductions. So I just, please know that we will be thoughtful. We will, we will continue to try to make sure that we keep our reductions in areas that are least impactful, but they all are going to have an impact. Okay?
Thank you. So what you can expect from us, we'll have the budget presentation that's happened this evening. The revenue calculator is out, so we're working through that. We will be doing a budget update in June. We'll do it by June 22nd. And then in July, we're planning on having a budget hearing. And in August, we're planning on a budget adoption. So those are the components. Now, it does take quite a bit to balance a budget, and so there may be flexibility that's asked for at some point in time, but that's the plan as it stands right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions? And just for the, for the public, as well as Board members, that there is a very extensive appendix, so with more detail. And I think some of this, we've been hearing from you and your team ongoing, so this should not be any of its new news to anyone. So thank you for putting this through. And thank you for participating as a part, as a public member in our, and with 24 other folks to, to actually help us, you know, see how that impact directs people, hits people directly. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Anyone have any questions for Ross? Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so now we are on to item number 13, Curriculum Instruction. 13.1, Approval to Purchase the Spring Board Curriculum Materials for the 2023-2024 School Year. And who is doing that?
Mr. Edman.
Here he comes.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends the Board of Directors approve the purchase and delivery of springboard curricular materials before the opening of the 2023-24 school year in the amount of $206,000. Includes tax, shipping, funding source, CNI, basic ed.
I move to adopt item 13.1.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any comments or question on this item? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. It is adopted. 5-0. Item 13.2, Approval of Request to Extend the Head Start Award Liquidation and Date. End date.
The Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning recommends that the Board of Directors approve the request to the Office of Head Start to extend the financial, final liquidation period for ARP Head Start supplemental funding for an amount not to exceed $50,000, funding source Office of Head Start.
I move to adopt item 13.2.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this item?
I do have a question, because typically when you're looking at education, liquidation is not necessarily-
Yeah.
-related with that. Could you just explain a little bit what that language means and why liquidation is used and what that actually means in this context? Not like, you know?
A sale at a furniture store, yes. Yes. Right. So I'm not even sure why they picked the word liquidation, but I do know that for us, it's about meeting all those expenditures by said dates and not putting us in a position to have to pay that back. And so I'd have to get more clarification as to why that word was picked, but as far as the process, we're basically asking for an extension for us to finish our spending for our students.
Great. Thank you. I was just a little confused when I read the agenda. I was like, liquidation, huh?
It's the federal language of Head Start. It will keep you way up here. Yep, it is true.
Thank you.
All right. So we have no, you, any other comments or questions? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? 5-0, passes. Thank you very much, Zeke. Item number 14, Business Matters. 14.1, Approval of Contract Number TSD-21-018, Addendum Number Five, Between Maxim Healthcare and Tacoma Public Schools for the 2022-2023 School Year.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Director of Student Services, recommends that the Board of Directors approve Contract Number TSD-21018, Addendum Number Five, Between Maxim Healthcare and Tacoma Public Schools from September 1st, 2022, to August 31st, 2023. Funding source, Student Services.
I move to adopt item 14.1.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? 5-0, passes. Item 14.2, Approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP Amendment Number Five to the Contract Between Tacoma Public Schools Number 10 and Corsmo Construction for the Synthetic Fields Upgrade Bundle Project.
Yes, this is a continuation of our field upgrades across the district. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve GMP Amendment Number Five, which states the guaranteed maximum price for the scope of work at Truman Middle School, Gray Middle School, Lincoln High School, and First Creek Middle School. The Chief Operating Officer also recommends the Board authorized as superintendent or designated to sign said GMP Amendment Number Five in the amount of $25,805,301, excluding sales tax.
I move to adopt item 14.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this one? We've seen this before, other, other iterations, so thank you. All right. No questions, so I call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes 5-0. Thank you so much. Okay, under Other Business, we have the adopt, 15.1, Adoption of Resolution Number 2123, the Acceptance of the Contract Between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Abshire Construction Company.
This is the closure of this project. The contractor has met all our terms and conditions within that contract.
For which school?
Hunt Middle School. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 2123 for the acceptance of the project completion and approve the acceptance of contract with Abshire Construction Company for the Hunt Middle School replacement.
It is, and so Katie's going to have to read the vote. But we still need it moved and we still need to move it.
I move to adopt item 15.1.
A second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this one? That was my question about the resolution. No, it's, and it's, it's always nice to put a, dot the i and cross the t on a project as it seems like it finished a long time ago, so hey. So I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy General Counsel, who will read the roll.
Thank you, President Bonbright. Your vote, President Bonbright?
Aye.
Vice President Stogier?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
Director Leon?
Aye.
Director McElroy?
Aye.
All right, it passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Chris. All right, we are, we are finished with the, with the businesses at hand this evening and on to the comments and et cetera, but I'm going to turn it over to Amanda, who will, I don't know how much many more times we'll have you here coming to us, but because I know the end of the year is nigh.
Will we get her next year?
Yeah. She's coming back. Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I want to start off by saying how amazing this school year has been. It's really been the best I've ever had. It was challenging, but fun at the same time. It was because of ASB, because of my classes and just the events that we threw together. And it was just the best I've ever had. And it was, and that's important because after the last few crazy years during the pandemic, it's important for us to like build these memories while we're still young and in high school. So, yeah. Some updates on Lincoln. Our Multicultural Week is next week, and we'll be celebrating all cultures, not just heritage, but also through academics and our athletes. We've also been decorating using, what's it called? Origami. And we were making some pictures of like Pokemon or something like that, because there's other types of cultures that is not just heritage, it's everything. It's what makes your school and like the different groups around that. So we're going to try to celebrate that next week. Our Multicultural Assembly is on Friday. We have 13 performers, including the National Anthem. And that's about 70 students who have been working very hard the past year, practicing after school every day, well, not every day since, but like lately, to put this on for us. And I'm so excited for it. After that, we have what's called Abe Fest, and we're going to be, we're going to have Viennong as one of our caterers. Yeah. It's going to happen from like 3:30 until 6:00, if you guys want to come by. We also got countries' flags in our cafeteria, which is something our ASB teacher has been wanting to do for years, and it finally happened, so that's very exciting. And yeah. I also want to end this off by saying that I've been a TPS student my entire life, and I've always had such amazing teachers. They saw me through when I was really quiet and they built up my confidence. They believed in me every single year. I had such amazing teachers that turned me into who I am today. And I'm very grateful to be a TPS student. I've had so many amazing experiences here. Yeah.
Thank you for that, Amanda. And we, it has been, it has been our joy and pleasure to have your voice at our table this year. And I really do encourage you to apply again next year, so I don't know that you have to apply.
It's a two-year, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, then never mind your-
No, we already got you. You're not going anywhere.
Okay.
I do have a quick question, though. So the assembly, do you know what time the assembly is at?
It's going to be a 73-minute assembly, so we're thinking around like 12:50. It might start around that time. Yeah.
And you said next Friday.
Next.
There's no school tomorrow.
Second.
Yeah, on the second, yes.
Perfect, just wanted to be clear.
Yes.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we have the, the Board members who are going to share what they've been up to since the last board meeting or beyond. So who wants to start?
No, Lori.
No comment from me today.
Yes. Then from me. I'll go. Sorry, that was really funny. I thought he was going to beat me.
What just happened? All right, go ahead.
So I really wanted to touch back into Head Start Policy Council. That's really something that I've been working on with Michelle and with the Policy Council team members this whole time, and it's been such a joy and pleasure for me. We're currently getting ready for that federal two, F2 review. And I want to say that I was truly coached by the parents. They're like, do you understand? I'm like, well, wait, wait, wait. I was a Head Start teacher. They're like, no, no, but do you understand the impacts of this? Do you understand why this matters to us? And so when you really hear from the parents, their perspective of why we need funding, why we need granted opportunities, why we need to keep Head Start and why we need to continue to fight for it, I think their passion was really driven by their own trips to DC and down to Olympia. They've been lobbying for their kids. And so it was kind of interesting where I'm coming in already a fan and they're like, let us tell you why. And I'm like, okay, I'm listening. And so I'm like, if you're approaching me, someone who supports you in that way, just imagine those who might be in opposition. If you have someone so passionately in front of your face telling you, this is why early learning matters. So the parents on Policy Council, they have just been rock stars all year, and they have prepped me because I get to sit in with them for the federal two review. And then other than that, I want to reach back to a comment made earlier about like not knowing what's going on in your community. So in Tacoma, we are really fortunate. We have the Central Committee of Tacoma, I don't know, but either way, it's the neighborhood councils. And there's a neighborhood council for every region of Tacoma. It's right on the City of Tacoma website. And if people want to know about what's happening in their community, that's a really good place to get that introduction to information. I know we talk about things here at the Board all the time, and I'm always inviting people to go into your communities and find people who are talking about it. In South Tacoma, which is the area where I hang out, our own Tanisha Jumper, Jumper comes from TPS, and she gives a liaison report updating all the citizens who show up to that meeting, like, what's going on in our schools? So I just really want to invite anyone who's listening, if you don't know what's happening in your community, you can't make it to our board meeting, you watched it two weeks later, you didn't know we passed something, show up at your monthly neighborhood council meetings. They're always looking for more people and they really want to get the word out about what's happening in our city, not just our schools. The fire department's there, TPU is there. We've had the libraries come out and give presentations. It's just a really good time. And I know the health department is looking at partnering with the neighborhood councils to bring in food and culture before meetings kick off. And that's a partnership they've been working on for about two years. But we never know when things are going to fall. But I just hope that that really kicks off so that people don't feel left out of the loop. And I, I really hate when people come and they're like, I didn't know about this because I was that person. I was working too many hours, I just really couldn't keep up. And so my neighborhood council really helped educate me on what's happening in our city. And that is my report.
Awesome, thank you. Director Keating?
Well, I just have a few things. So I did get to go to this Palmer Scholars Event, which is their spring fundraiser, I believe. And that was the first time I had attended, and there were a lot of familiar faces from our district, many, many building principals that I know were there and level directors. So it was really, our TA president was there as well, along with some of our other teachers or career counselors as well. So it was a, it was a really, I really appreciated learning about Palmer Scholars and the evolution of the organization and the program and the focus on CTE and that direction. And so it was a really, I really, really enjoyed the, just the presentation and the keynote, and it was a really great event that I left feeling quite inspired by. And then I did go to, on Tuesday, I attended the Native American Senior Ceremony, which was so special to be a part of and something I haven't done before. to be a part of and something I haven't done before. I did, so each student was presented with a ceremonial drum. And I didn't see everything that was in their package, but they also got an honor blanket. Did I say that correctly? And then a medallion. And our Title VI Director, is that David's formal title?
Indian Education.
Thank you very much. He took such care to connect with each and every student that was there. And that was really special to walk and meet the families here where the students were going. David was so encouraging and thoughtful and about just engaging, like what are you doing? What is next plans? He had resources he was willing to share, directing students to particular programs based on what they shared with him. It was really special. And the artist who hand painted each one of the ceremonial drums, I got to meet him, and I think it was his daughter, but I'm not sure. It could have been his granddaughter. But it was really lovely.
George Zuniga.
Thank you. And the other thing that I learned being a part of this ceremonial process is that the ceremonial gifts are part of a partnership with the Puget tribe that allows these things to happen. So it was, it was really special, and I will certainly make sure to be there every year that I can go in the future. And also meeting the staff that support these students. It was, it was really special. And then I ended up, I'm going to the Silas Honor Court Ceremony, and which my own kid was a part of, which was pretty cool. And I just wanted to thank Director Stroger for stepping in for me because I was going to be at the Mi Centro Listening Session, and family came first. So I just want to thank Vice President Stroger for stepping in on that. And I guess I just, again, this is my lived experience right now, all of the seniors and all the families around our seniors that are graduating or working on getting to that across the stage. It's an exciting time. It's nervous. It's, as we say in our house, it's nervitis or nervited, where you're excited and nervous about what comes next. But I know that there's a huge amount of effort that goes into getting our students to this place. And there's just countless people that helped them get there. So I'm just grateful for all of the humans that are involved in getting our seniors across the finish line.
Thank you. Director Leon?
Thank, um, down there? Good. Just kind of had all the thanking the, all the educators and teachers around this evening, and graduating students, but also the, there's a lot of S back testing that just happened, and a lot of A P testing at all grade levels. So a lot of challenges that kids just went through as they're, not all of them are finishing school right now, but they're taking some challenging tests. So good work to all those students out there. Challenging times, buckling down, doing well.
Thank you. So, well, I actually, actually, as you know, I had to miss last board meeting, which was my first, I think, in the entire time I've been on the board. But it was sort of stressful for me to miss. But anyway, thank you to Vice President Stroger for stepping in and leading admirably and very capably, as I knew he would, through the board meeting. But so I may talk about some things that happened prior to, you know, over the past month. So one of them being is that we did wrap up just this week our family listening sessions, and we all participated in one, at least one. And with the group, we, the first one was with the Asian Pacific Islander Center. The second one was with the Urban League. And then this last one was with Mi Centro. And each one of them was different, very different from the, than the others. And then, and so it was fascinating to sort of see what each community, what's important, each of the communities that we spoke to, all the families. And I just want to say thank you to all those hosting organizations because I know that was a lot of work for them to pull families together. And we appreciated their leadership and their kindness. So that was fabulous. The other thing, and it might have been mentioned because this happened a little, like, you know, three weeks ago, but I attended the Communities and Schools Luncheon, which you probably talked about, I figured. But.
Maybe. I don't remember anymore.
Okay, anyway, so that was also great to see the enthusiasm. I'm always super excited because the Asian Pacific Islander Cultural Group that is from Mount T, what is, what is their name? Pacifica? Pacifica. From Mount T, Mount Tahoma. They are exceptional. And every time I see them, I just, I'm in my seat. I can't stop dancing. They just make me smile. Those kids are just really doing what they love to do, and I love to watch them. So they were there. The other thing I did a couple of weeks ago was to go to the Vibrant Schools Surge Event, which was, you all know Kimi Jin from, who is a very important community partner for us. And her Vibrant Schools, she had this big all-day event. And her, it was interesting, the, she invited the NBA star Mac Calvin, who many of you may have heard of before. He used to be a big star in the NBA, and he now works with youth around, you know, kind of focuses around basketball. But it's really about, you know, all the ways to stay out of gangs and to get engaged in, you know, finding your passion and all of that. And he was, was really inspiring. So that was kind of a fun, listening to him talk. I also joined Director McElroy at the I Am Her event with middle schoolers, and it was kind of co-hosted by Girls Hearts on Fire. And could not have been more impressed with this group of women who are working with our young girls to help them be true to themselves and be authentic and find their path forward. And really exciting. So lots of really neat ways to engage with students in the past month or so. Also have been multiple times in the violence, youth violence prevention meetings with other electeds and our CEOs from our agencies to try and continue to put together, patch together opportunities to keep our kids, our youth, mostly middle and high schoolers, off the streets and in safe spaces where they can, where they can feel comfortable and safe to be and can hang during the summer. So we're still putting those in, look for future information on that. There's, we've got twelve sites and six middle school, six high school all around the district with our partners at Metro Parks and the Boys and Girls Clubs and, and the Y's and different partners that we're working with and to put together these safe spaces from five to ten P M during weeknights, Monday through Friday, for the ten weeks of summer. And so you'll be getting more information on that. But it is solidifying, so that's exciting. Also, several of us were at the groundbreaking at Bryant, which was fun. Always fun to see those kids and getting there with a shovel for a new building. That's gonna be pretty exciting. Also participated in the Foundation for Tacoma Students Charting Our Future Event, and our very own Vice President Stroger was one of the featured interviewers of a young gal who was incredibly impressive, twenty-two-year-old, who was talking about her, her lived experience of being a person of color in a community and trying to figure out how, you know, her pathway forward. And Director Stroger asked her, was asking, posing really interesting questions. And there were a couple of times he totally went off script. It was awesome because he just leaned forward and asked her this other question. And of course, the ones he made up were the ones that were most impactful, just have, just saying. But anyway, so that was kind of a fun event. Also went to the Mount Tahoma Forum on Community Violence Roundup. It was the adults looking at the results of that meeting that many of us went to, that the students had run, the forum that they had put together. Now, this was the adults. A lot of teachers showed up. It was really nice to see this interest that we're all trying to get together, community partners and teachers to work together and help our students get, move forward to help our community be safer. Participated in the Foundation for Tacoma Students Quarterly Board Meeting. And then we, none of us talked about this yet, but I will just close with that last week, for those of you who might have missed it, we had a study session. And I think the Superintendent referred to it briefly tonight once. We had three topics. We had Charlie Brown, who's, who is our government relations person, contractor. He gave us a legislative update, and we talked a little bit about, you know, kind of what kind of a session did we have for education? And while it made, you know, we made a lot of progress and a lot of good things happened, doesn't mean, doesn't mean that it's alleviating all, as we heard tonight, the, the negative financial impacts that will be resulting from the reduction in student population at schools across the state. So there's still more to do. But I, again, want to always take this opportunity to thank our very own Director Keating for taking on the role of Legislative Rep, Representative, at the state and federal level. And really, it is a thankless job. And so I can't thank you enough because it's a thankless job. So thank you. And I know you and Charlie and, and the Superintendent worked together like weekly, multiple times a week to continue to keep us on, on track. So thank you. Again, the second was, piece was, Zeke Edmund gave us a nice briefing on the grading policy, which we then saw today in a more, in a policy format. So that was great. Thank you, Zeke, for you and your team. And then lastly, we focused on the last of our board goals that we had, we, last August, we passed, you know, we put forward three board goals. One was listening students, listening sessions for students. One was listening families, listening sessions with families. And we've done both of those. And then this was the last issue, which was about environmental stewardship. And we had our General Counsel Malik Benro give us an, an analysis of, kind of a, a policy analysis of what policies exist that we have already in place around environmental stewardship. And then, then we had a group conversation about where were there gaps? What, what could we do to augment? And so that session was, was really kind of enlightening. And I think very, I mean, climate change is, is not going away. So we really have to think about our responsibility as an employer, as a, as a foundational component of our community, and as how we are teaching young children to come up and be stewards of the, of the environment. So it was a great meeting. So that was the wrap up for the last month. So it's been busy. Anybody have anything else that came to mind while I was babbling on?
One thing, the teacher delegation from South Korea was also here for the study session. And getting to meet them and a little bit and hear about a little of their experience was also pretty fun.
And they are, they probably, this just leaving now because they were, they were just gonna be here for one more week. So that was really fun to meet them and got a picture with them. So, all right.
President Bonbright?
Yes.
I wanted to thank you. That is so much work that you do on behalf of our district. The way you prattled it off like it was nothing. You're like, yeah. And then every day of the week, I was just working for free. And I just want to say like, thank you for the work you're doing. You make all of us look really good because you're putting into action what we talk about. And you're like taking what we're all discussing here, what we discussed in our study sessions, and you go out and show that to the community. And I couldn't do that right now. So I really appreciate you for doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we all do. We all, you know, pass the step up and step up and support each other. So, all right. Item number eighteen, announcement of next regular board meeting. So speaking of that, June eighth, twenty twenty-three, six P M. Be here for a business meeting again, June twenty-second, another business meeting. And the week in between is graduations. They're not on here, but I want to say we all have graduations to go to that week. So that's gonna be so fun. And then July thirteenth, we have one meeting, just so the public knows, during the summer, we have one board meeting in July and one board meeting in August. So it's, July thirteenth will be that, that board meeting. And I think that's probably when we will have the budget, you know, public meeting.
We're actually shooting for August for the.
Not the adoption, but don't, we have to have a public meeting?
A public, yes. There will be a number of meetings throughout. So if you're interested in the budget, we'll keep you.
We'll keep you posted. Okay, perfect. All right. And so that is it. That is our next session. And then August is the, we'll have another meeting in August. All right. Anybody have anything else to add? Superintendent, do you have anything?
I just want to give a couple of kids shout-outs from the last week. I was, Wainwright, a group of Wainwright kids. And I know President Bonright's checking the boxes and saying, I was there, I was there. She was. And they are doing some fascinating work around. One of their topics was educational inequities. I want to give a shout-out. There was a two dozen plus kids highlighted it through Rotary Eight, Tacoma Rotary Eight today. It was an amazing opportunity. I had a chance to listen to some very important conversations that were produced and by the Silas G S A Club this week. It was very impactful. Good conversations kids having, hard conversations kids are having. And then finally, I think I might be recovering. I had a chance to work out with the Lincoln Abe's football team last week in the morning. And what I want to say is, is not only a big thank you to the coaching staff there, but those Lincoln Abe's, they came fifteen weeks, four days a week, five forty-five, seven o'clock. And, yeah.
Excellent.
You know, and working, they have a scoring competition about their grades, their school attendance. And so if you ever wanted to see some, and, and then I'll say, we had tons of student athletes and performances, kids accomplishing, getting into the state tournament, stadium baseball, stadium soccer, Silas soccer, Silas baseball, all the way down track and field this weekend. If you get a chance, go out to the, Mount Tahoma and see that and a bunch of productions. And so if you ever worry about whether there's talent in our country or in our region, just pause and look at our schools and see what our kids. And then thanking all the educators and partners behind those kids to say, and their families. So I just want to say, good job, T P S, as a community.
Yeah. And actually, thanks for the reminder because this is also the time there, the spring plays, and there's the orchestras and the band performances, and all of that is happening. And we have a rich culture of, you know, community activities in this district, and I'm really proud of that. And I did want to thank you for, I forgot, that I've been a mentor for four fifth graders at Wainwright. Every week for a couple, you know, I don't know how long it seems like it's forever because four fifth graders. Anyway, so it's, it's been such a fabulous experience. And the big event is gonna be happening in two weeks. And I hope we're ready. But they're doing research projects, and they picked child trafficking. I mean, it's a really intense subject, and they're really grappling with that. And two of, yeah. And so it's, it's pretty exciting. So I just want to say that that has also been, I think that has been the most exhausting of all the things I do is, is really trying to, and that's why I say to these teachers, every teacher, I, wow, it is a gift, and you are a gift to our community because it is hard. It is hard work. So anyway, thank you to everyone for all you do, everyone in this room and everyone that's listening. I know that you are really working hard to support our students, and we are all grateful. So on behalf of the board, I officially now adjourned.